Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Motion, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Agenda is approved. Item B, school board appreciation.
Okay, we were kind of joking about this. We'll see if I can do it without a cough and I have a cough drop here. So for those who are listening this after, this evening, this is school board appreciation month in the state of Washington. And so we always honor our school board tonight and the governor, our new governor, Governor Ferguson wrote a proclamation and so I'm going to read that tonight to start our festivities. Whereas the mission of Washington's public school system is to ensure that all students achieve a high, at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible members of a democratic society and enjoy productive and satisfying lives. And whereas Washington's two hundred and ninety-five locally elected school board of directors and nine elected educational service district boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state. And whereas the districts and regions they lead serve more than one point one million students, have a combined annual budget over fifteen billion dollars and employ approximately one hundred and twenty thousand people. And whereas, school directors play a cru- crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. And whereas, school directors are directly accountable to the residents in their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools. And whereas, school directors and ESDs provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of school children. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize school board directors as outstanding public servants and champions for public education. Now, therefore, I, Bob Ferguson, governor of the state of Washington, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-five as school board recommend, recognition month in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in the special observance, and that's what we're doing tonight. So on behalf of myself and the community of Prosser, we're going to present you with our certificate. And at each of your places, we have school principals here and people from our community to thank you and you have little gifts. And I believe some of them would like to say something. I don't know if that's specific. They're like, what? But on behalf of Deanna and I, I don't know if Deanna has something she'd like to say. It's been a pleasure, as in my second year of tenure, we've got to know each other and grow and are taking the district in a great direction. So thank you very much, each of you, and I'm going to hand you your certificate and shake your hand. So our, our team of principals have given you little gifts, things from the schools. We just really want you to know that we know that sometimes it's a thankless job. And people need to understand it's, it's not a high-paying opportunity here today to do this and the time commitment is great. So we thank you.
Very much.
I've worked with a lot of school boards over the last many years. And I do really appreciate your partnership and appreciate that you guys communicate with us and how we work together to try to make things go well for this district.
So we have cupcakes and water and little treats. So we're going to take just one or two minutes. If you'd like to get something, please do. And those in our audience, please join us for just one or two minutes. And if you'd like to come up and talk to the school board members, this would be your opportunity if you're in the audience.
Right, that's the quietly. This is, this is your one-minute warning to finish up your cupcake and we'll get back to the meeting.
He's got to talk, he says, I've got to talk. Those are keepers, right?
Well, thank you for the treat. We're going to go ahead and resume the meeting with Mr. Bailey assessing the twenty twenty-five graduation timeline.
Thank you. Thank you all again. We have been challenged with a little bit of a compressed schedule the last, as of last year, I think that was the first year where we didn't have a full week to end the year. So that was really the start of this. I put all the dates on there for the end of the year activities for our senior group. That's my proposal. We did that because with the four-day week that created a challenge for us and trying to get all of these activities in. The main difference in this one from previous years is that we, we would like to graduate our seniors four days early. Now, all of that is contingent on the timeline. If we have snow days, you have to graduate within five days of, of the end of the year. So if we have more than one snow day, then that creates a problem. But as, as usual and as always, we kind of play this by, by ear and we do the best we can. But in order to plan, we would like to recommend that this is the graduation timeline. Are there any questions on this?
I'll add some insight to that. So we have two snow days built into our schedule. So, and then we have the third day, which would be the Friday. So we would have to have four snow day or the fourth snow day to be able to have to move it to the following Saturday. Because the state law reads they have to graduate within five days of the last day of school.
Thank you. And the, the challenge also is they have to, they can have five days that are technically non-instructional days. So if there, there can be some flexibility, maybe with some sort of Saturday thing or something, if you really got into a pinch, because once we publish the day and people have plans, it gets really hard to.
Video? Thank you, Mr. Bailey. And your information, item number two as well, the community trip to Washington D.C.
I just wanted to, given the state that, and the declaration last, maybe that wasn't a declaration, but the move to our financial situation last board meeting prompted me to put this one on here. We do have a group of teachers, community members that are going on a trip to DC. I believe Alexander is one of those. This is outside of the school. This is outside of, you know, they've paid their money to agencies outside of the school district. No school district members or staff are being paid for this trip. They're all paying out of pocket to go on this trip. So I just wanted to make sure that there was a distinction, given the climate and what we've been talking about the last, the last few board meetings, that this is not a school trip and we are not paying for this trip. Everybody's paying for this on their own and this is separate from school activity. So any questions on that one?
My, I wish it was a school trip. I'm just the Washington, the DC Mustang trips that happened for your, so maybe someday.
Maybe someday.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Item number three, recent grant awarded to the technological, technology department by Shawna.
I'm really just here to answer any questions. The insert in your board packet said that we recently got two grants. We got one from OSPI for twenty-five thousand. It was for device replacement and repairs. With that, we purchased, we repaired a hundred Chromebooks, we purchased fifteen Chromebooks and we bought three hundred chargers, which was huge. Didn't, it made a dent. It made a dent in what we have to fix in our Chromebook inventory, which was really nice. And then we recently received a grant from the military for forty-two thousand. It's a substantial grant and its sole purpose is for cybersecurity. So with that, we'll be purchasing some mostly services with that, some qualified people. So some like cybersecurity experts to come in, lay eyes on our firewall, make sure we're up to standard, lay eyes on our endpoint security, make sure we're up to standard, that type of thing. Well, they'll also get us some training for our staff. So there'll be some, some additional training that can go out for our staff.
So I asked Sean to present this this evening. Normally, we talk about spending money, but it's nice to have some good news about receiving money. And some of the tasks that you've challenged, not only me, but the team, is to reach out and find grants. And this is an example of the work that the team is doing to bring money in that is, allows us to help with the spending. So that was the reason I asked her to present this forward.
Any questions about those?
Wait, I know we talked numbers way back when as far as Chromebook replacement and all that. And you said this makes a dent, like how much of a dent? Not much.
Um, at any given day, we have, I'm going to go with currently Blake has anywhere between three and five hundred Chromebooks to repair at a time. They mostly come from the middle school and they're mostly jacks or missing keys. They're usually not hard replacements or necessarily expensive replacements. They're just middle schoolers being middle schoolers and they take time to replace.
What's the cost of a Chromebook?
The cost of a Chromebook is becoming really expensive. In fact, our district tech committee recently just discussed the cost of a Chromebook versus the cost of a Windows device and whether or not we as a district are going to stay with Chromebooks. Cost of a Chromebook is now getting close to five hundred dollars. You're roughly four, four fifty for a Chromebook and about thirty-five to fifty dollars for a license.
Well, great work on the grant, Grant Riden Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great work.
Is there anyone who's signed in to address the board in person or online? Okay. We'll go to item B. Nope, item B is hearing of visitors. We're going to go to F, student representative report. Yoshi, would you like to start?
So I don't think I have much. Oh, at our meeting with Kim, we talked about maybe using ASB money to hire a guest speaker to talk about the importance of not using racial slurs, not only to students, but to parents, because that's where it starts. And then, well, I, I proposed that to the ASB and they would like to just hear more about it. So I'll talk to Kim more about that. And then not too much going on. I was late because of wrestling again. So just want to say that.
Thank you, Yoshi. Alexander?
Um, I don't know if I mentioned this last meeting, but I've been, I have another survey out on the bulletin that students could fill out, asking them more questions, more in-depth questions about like the food service and some other related topics. And next Wednesday at about one forty, we plan to meet again, like how we did last time, to discuss like the results of the thing. Have community members meet and students come to also talk. So I just wanted to have like an open invitation to everyone here. About one forty, one forty-five after school Wednesday at the high school and probably in like the cafeteria, we'll be having another meeting talking about like the results and what we could do moving forward to help make our food service better.
That is great. Thanks for all your time on the survey. I'm working on that. So.
I have to say, I was at the high school today and this poster's up. It's got the information and a QR code, I think, on the, on the page. So. And on that, you know that we have a salad bar now at the middle school. And that is in part on Alexander's work.
Got a discussion items. Number one, school building reports will be King Riverview Elementary by Principal Jettie Butler.
Okay, oh, we've had an interesting day today with no heat at K R V, but luckily about twenty minutes before we got out, it was fixed. And so we get to return to our building tomorrow and be there with some good heat. So that is exciting that I didn't have to do an alternate plan for that. And so I just, our staff and our students were excellent today, super flexible and what, and what we had going on. And the students did not care one bit. They were just fine. So they were happy as could be and just fine. And big thanks to our admin team and maintenance, IT, Deanna and Kim for just helping out and supporting us and doing whatever we need to do. They all brought heaters from all their buildings, personal heaters, a little office heater. So we had heaters in all of our classrooms, which is good. And, and then we just did our best to communicate early to our parents and I got some positive feedback from a couple of parents just thanking us for, you know, keeping our kids warm and safe. And so that's good. So.
I just have to say, I was coming back to River View a second time and a mom was, there were some parents that picked their kids up because of the cold. And this mom's looking at her and she goes, oh, honey, are you okay? Are you cold? He goes, I'm fine.
Yeah. Big deal. And so that was our interesting day today. What I really wanted to report on was we're kind of wrapping up our iReady testing and and, you know, coming in off of Christmas break or winter break and our teachers have been doing their ELLA and ENEAL testing for reading. And so this is a good time for them to like, kind of get kids where they're at and then make a big push right before spring break. And so one of the things that my leadership team and I have noticed is our ENEAL and our ELLA data from our curriculum is also matching our proficiency levels for our, our iReady data. And iReady is a separate company. So it's like pretty much validating where our students are at. And, and that's, that's looking good. So right now as a building, I don't know, we started, I, I don't remember where we started at, but in the teens and we're up to forty-three percent of students at grade level. So. So that's a celebration that we will celebrate in our building. And then another big celebration last year, my kindergarten bilingual class, all students left at being on grade level in reading. And so I've just kind of been tracking them to see how they're doing. Like, are they continuing to stay on grade level as, you know, the standards get harder and a different teacher and all of those things. And they are still continuing to make that make that progress and that growth. And so they're still on grade level. So we're excited about that and celebrating that. So. Those are my two celebrations that we're having in our building.
I really think that we need to slow down and think about what she said. So they left kindergarten on grade level. We've been not quite halfway, but pretty doggone close to halfway through the year and they're still on grade level. Whether there was a little backward slide and then we caught up or we're doing, but that's a huge accomplishment. And that's all students, right? Okay.
And we're, remember December, in February, I'm going to bring you data that you'll be able to see that will show all this for all the building.
Thank you. Thank you. We are going to reschedule the CTE department review with Rick Collette and go to item three, review of policy and procedures, six, one, one, four, gifts or donations.
So this one is, excuse me, coming back, right? We've been talking about this. We, there's lots of language. So this is a discussion item. So that's up for discussion. There's not voting this evening on this item. You have it in front of you. One of the things we decided at one of our discussions was taking out empty bottles and using images of alcohol for display. This is becoming more common practice and I think both Yoshimi and Alexander brought it up that it, we're having a Thrive poster and we're doing this and yet we're having, you know, alcohol and different things. And so we don't want to be hypocritical in that. And yet at the same time, we want to support our local businesses and whatever. So that was one change that is from the plas time. And then no alcohol is allowed on school premises, obviously. So if there was a gift basket or did something, then it would have to be picked up at a different location and then verified that the person or individual picking it up is twenty-one years of age. And I think then we, you can also see the district does not allow alcohol distributors or sponsors at school events. And that was from what we heard of the discussion. So I think that's the only thing that was really changed in this particular.
Any question?
I don't. I think I'm.
So I'm going to have an unpopular opinion probably, but I've been thinking a lot about this. And the more I think about it, the more I just think we just should not have anything related to alcohol. Accepting, but accepting that from, from anyone to the district, right? So there are ways for those businesses to donate, support our students through boosters or other ways, right? Third parties. I think, in my opinion, I'd happily accept a monetary donation from anyone if they're not expecting to have their, like their business name displayed, right? They can still donate money. But I was thinking about like, what sets alcohol apart from other things that we don't want our students to have? Like, can we display an empty carton of cigarettes? Can we have a cannabis product, right? We would say no to all of those things. So I guess in my, in my mind, alcohol's in the same boat. I think we should leave it out.
I'd say, I, I agree with you. I think especially when Alexander made that comment, you know, you got a Thrive poster that says, you know, don't use alcohol. You drive downtown, Thrive has a big campaign right now, you know, parents that host some of. And you're exactly right. We wouldn't have an empty package of cigarettes. Cigarettes. So perhaps we leave it, leave it the way it is.
Yeah, I mean, in looking at all the other board policies from different districts, right? None of them call out alcohol and make a special exception for that either. So I don't know why in our district we would. Obviously, we have a lot of wineries, right? So that would be the big reason. We also have two pot shops, right? So I mean, I think if people want to donate cash, they can donate cash. And if they want to donate bottles of wine, they can do that through a booster fundraiser.
I agree with Michelle. Right? Yeah, I agree with Michelle. And I forgot who brought up, it was a board member, but they wanted us to ask other students. And I did ask a few and they don't really care, but we're not really trying to appeal to them as much as we are trying to appeal to parents. And there are many parents, such as my own, that don't drink at all and they think it's awful. So I think we need to consider those types of parents because they're the ones that are the majority nowadays, like more and more younger generations are realizing that it's really bad for you. So I think that's, we need to appeal to them.
You need no gummies.
Well, I, I appreciate that feedback. That's, I remember I had asked that and I don't know if you get any feedback at all with Alexander.
From the people that I asked agreed with like that, that we shouldn't have like alcohols, bottles or whatnot on campus for like the silent auctions. Because also the thrive going on, it's sending a conflicting message and such.
Thanks, everybody, for the feedback. So I think I, I know we spent a lot of time, a lot of the graphs have gone through. So.
So what I'm hearing is the board will not, will accept monetary gifts or donations. If they are located in Benton, Kentucky, the gifts or donations must be in the form of coupons or gift certificates? But no bottles or, so we need to work on the wording in that paragraph. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty flexible on this. So I mean, I'm not going to raise a huge record with it. I, I understand, yeah, empty bottles. If we're doing some sort of auction, probably not the best thing to have in a school. But if it's, you know, a gift certificate for a case of wine or whatever, I'm okay with, I'm honestly, I'm okay with that. That's kind of where I'm at. Yeah, I, I don't, I guess I'm a little more opinion on. Yeah, well.
I, I guess I would say like if we were, there's only a couple of times where we have some sort of fundraiser actually that's put on by the school on school premises, right? It's very limited.
So an example would be our PTO.
Right. So in that case, right, that event that I went to with a family event, there's kids everywhere. I don't even think gift certificates or coupons for alcohol should be there. I think anything that's a controlled substance that doesn't belong in our, in our district fundraising. And I, I mean, I, I would just take out this whole piece and just, I don't know, maybe just add a, add a sentence somewhere that says for anything that is, you know, controlled substance, we don't accept that.
And that's, I think the way the policy is now.
So we can work through that. It's been changed. We've had this discussion. I don't even really honestly remember what it says and how it came up. And so I, I will go back and provide that for the next, we'll, we'll still leave it in discussion and we'll bring it forth with the other idea. And at some point, then the board will just have to say to move on and some will vote yay and some are voting nay or what, however it works out. But we can, I'm hearing three heads nodding that we'd like to do some adjustment and one who's flexible. So I'm going to work on wording that may be more conducive to the majority.
I will say, and I don't know how others feel about this, but I, I feel differently about monetary donations. I feel like a business owner who happens to run a winery, if they want to provide a monetary donation to the school without any recognition. Recognition, right? We, we should be able to accept that. Not publicizing in any way. What they sell, right? Just they can support the school monetarily. That, that I feel okay with. It's like when we have something visible that a student might see. Whether it be a coupon or an image of something. That's the people that doesn't sit well.
I don't have as much of a problem with the, the coupons and the gifts, gift certificates, but I don't think the bottles. But, um, yeah, cause I, you know, they don't have to have anything on there except the wording. Oh, but uh, yeah, that's, I guess that's where I stand. I, I think cash donations are great. But I would be okay with the, with the coupons and the gift certificates.
Now, what about a gift certificate to altitude happy tree? So, you know, is it, is it different?
Um, for me, I think it is, yeah.
For me, it's all the same.
You, you should come up. So that we can make sure those are online can hear you.
Um, I think of this from my days as athletic director and a number of fundraising opportunities. Uh, you're exactly right. We don't have a ton of silent auctions or, or opportunities. We don't hold, hold opportunities much. Um, to even have things like this in the building. However, we do run. Uh, posters and banners and we do ask people to contribute in that way to athletic programs. And in the past, we haven't been allowed to uh, accept. Uh, companies that, that promote wine or alcohol of any sort, um, so they can't even donate through the use of a banner. Um, because it has the name of a winery on it. So, um, as I'm listening to this discussion, you guys all bring up valid points. I question, where does that policy end? Whether it's, you know, having a product, a bottle of some kind? Or what, what are we saying we're okay with? Are we okay hanging a banner? Uh, on the fence? Are we okay hanging a banner in the gym that's, you know? I will refrain from saying businesses, but um, we, we've had quite a few people who want to help. Our athletic programs in this way, but have been, have not been allowed to because. A restaurant might sell alcohol, a, you know, where, whereas, you know, do you accept from? The orchard versus the wine company, the, there's, there's a lot of gray area and a lot of discussion that I think. Um, can come out here, um, and be part of this, this decision. So it makes sense.
Nice. I think that goes back to, I mean, a conversation we had a couple of board meetings ago. It's, you get into that gray area of, okay, are we gonna, so we're okay with hanging a banner that says Vermont Hop Yard? Or Bailey Estates and that, that's where I. I mean, if, if, if you're gonna keep it black and white, then yeah, that's kind of where that conversation went was. Yeah, we can't do that either, so.
That's in that second paragraph already.
Yeah.
Right. And the second paragraph does read that we do not allow that.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Take.
But we were talking about for donations for, so it is kind of hypocritical first paragraph versus second paragraph, but. So I need some I, somebody needs to give me some guidance.
So I just, I've been here, they've been around this bin many times. I was told today, I was called because of my experience and I said, you're saying I'm old. And then one person said, yeah, you are. I've been here a long time. I'm just gonna say that. Not doing it keeps us clean all the way around and there against no gray area. And when we get into gray area, when we're a public school, working with kids. Then like, again, it's really like, how can you say one legalized industry is okay and another one isn't? It's just better to say no. That's just me.
And I think that, that's where I'm leaning. Cause if we say, okay, well, wine's classy, so we can have it say winery, that's fine. But we're not gonna have, but not the pot shop. And I don't, I don't know how you make that distinction. They're both selling a product.
Um, that are legal to someone of a certain age.
That's true.
And so I think a good example that you used and. And I think most anyone can see it, we wouldn't put an empty carton cigarettes out in a, I mean, that's something that. You know, we wouldn't put it in a basket to raise money on us.
And I think. But I have seen cigars, so those must be classier.
Yeah, I can see, I can definitely see the need to be very black and white. And I mean, I would, to leave it the way it is. Would be fine too. Just trying to look for opportunities to, to, you know, raise money for. As much as we can, especially with the, the businesses around here being, you know, so many of them being in the wine industry.
It's really tough because I think there are a lot of them that want to support our students, especially our athletic programs, right? But they can still through other avenues, it's not directly.
Yeah. So I want to make sure that we are really, because this is a discussion item, right? That we're really talking. So that would mean. If the booster club sells a banner to someone to do something, they can't hang that banner because we have a no banner policy. So even if it's donated to the booster club, that banner could not go. That's what I'm hearing. I just want to make sure I'm being heard correctly. I mean, that I'm hearing correctly.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds, it sounds like the policy is gonna be the policy.
I, I would agree with that. AB's the beer distributing. That, that would be. Be winery, you know, brewery, ABC, pet shop. So I think you have to have that gray here. You have to do as much as you can to eliminate the gray here.
Yeah, but the booster club could put on an auction and have whatever they wanted. And give the funds to the school. That would be okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm seeing the eyes and the head nods and I'm gonna work on this language and we'll have it for discussion before it goes to first reading again.
And thank you so much for the review revision.
Well, that's fine.
Thank you.
Number four, review of policy procedure thirty two zero four sex discrimination, sex-based harassment of students prohibited.
I will first say, I'm very sorry that you got a hundred and nine pages of. Policies and procedures. Um, but there's been a lot of changes recently and Selena and I worked through this and, and she's like, Diana, there's so many changes. She did that red line. It's like, is, sometimes I think we have a policy and procedure, there's so much change. Doing the red line is kind of maybe a waste of effort to say these are two are so different that we're gonna show you them both. Um, but the WASDA policy, the second one that starts on page fifteen and the WASDA procedure that starts on thirty seven. Are the most current uh, policy and procedure. And then the draft, we actually have to have two procedures, one procedure for the implementation of sex discrimination and sex-based harassment of students prohibiting that. And there has to be a grievance procedure, so it's really like procedure one and procedure two. Um, but it is a lot. And so I apologize for that. I would like to whittle it down. So we're just looking at maybe the WASDA samples and then the draft procedure one that's at the very bottom. Um, so that it's cleaner. It's so much and I, we almost probably have to maybe leave it on discussion for another time. But we wanted to give you everything. Um, if there's a preference, I guess, for. Um, some of the other drafts, they're just not as current. They're a few years old. Oh, so there's multiple options for whatever reason, I don't know. But we wanted to give them all to you so that you could see them.
And there, there is a lot, you're right.
Oh.
Could you just like summarize?
Let's talk about the why that this is coming about.
Yeah.
So, so the laws, some of the laws have changed. Um, Washington state, as you know, is pretty progressive in these, in these areas. And so some of the changed and some of the guidelines and expectations for districts have changed. So this is WASDA's attempt to keep up with that. Um, you know, we don't have a policy writing expert in our district. Um, writing policy is really challenging and you guys know ultimately the board is responsible for policy. And then we're responsible for procedure, but this is a big one, like, you know, we want you guys to see them and understand them. Um, so we are not current and that matches the current law.
I think that's the big piece. Um, I actually met with uh, Director Ramon today and we talked about. What role does the federal government play in the state government? When school board policy is written and so forth. And, and I just kind of used an example, you're driving across our county and you, you're on an interstate which is. Right, interstate, federal. And then you're driving on a county road and a state road, right? State Highway ninety seven and then you go on twenty two and then you got on a county road. They all, all those guidelines and rules have to work together, even though you may be in jurisdiction of different places. And so what this WASDA policy does is takes into collect. And remember, this is written by your association. Does that make sense? This isn't written by. Like, like, or like the A W S P, the principals association is not writing this. Your directors doing that to make sure that we are. As closely complying with the law as possible. Um, and then we can tweak from there if need be, but that's why we always use that to start with.
I, I had a couple of questions. Um, so on the red line, red line policy. Page two, actually, it's page three, but so under investigation and response, just reading through it. How it is, I didn't see anything about on the response, like contacting parents.
What page are you on?
There's so much here, I can, I can pull, refer to things automatically for sure.
Red line policy.
Oh, okay, starting on page nineteen.
It's actually blue lines. There's a little red in the text.
In the red line policy.
Correct.
This one right here.
It's, it's, um, so it's up to the, so there are some.
This will probably lead to my next question.
So remember, this is, this is a model policy, but then as a district, we can make modifications to it. Um, and doing, putting something in like contacting parents or something like that is would not, it's not inappropriate. So it's, it's a model, but districts can adjust them, can make additions. I, we can increase expectation.
I just think, I mean, as a, I don't know, as a parent, my thought is, I mean, if something were to happen, that I would hope I would be contacted.
Sure.
Um, which leads me to the red line procedure. It talks about Washington state law. Depending on age. Information can be held from the parents. Do you know like what those ages are?
Twelve.
Not. That's ridiculous. I know it's not here.
So that's once again where Deanna and I are saying, this is a model policy. So if we say age of majority, so up till the age of eighteen or something. We are here to work with you to form a policy that is acceptable into your, to your accept. I mean, to your level of liking or whatever. So Deanna and I. Work for you and work for the community and the students of Proser. So if, if that is age wants clarified in procedure or policy, depending on that. Then that's what we're here to do is listen and bring that forward. And you know, much, much just like the.
Washington state law.
Right, that, that is scary for, for these guys too, because they're the ones that are administering that primarily. Mr. Denny, Mr. Bailey, because that, their kids don't turn twelve till they get to middle school. Um, and, and my guess, some of that is around, um. The students be able to keep confidential what they choose, like as far as gender identity. And then if there was a, this is my guess, this is just what I think. If a student um, was identifying um, under, you know, had, had a.
Their special group.
Parents to know. And maybe they're harassed for a certain reason. Maybe they were harassed because of their gender identity. That it can thirteen or fourteen or fifteen year olds say, I don't, I don't want you to tell my parents. That's what that's about and that is part of the law. So it, it is, we don't want to put these people or any future administrative generations in a difficult situation where they have to violate the law.
So I'm sorry, can, can we specify an older age if the law says twelve?
Well, it's tough. Um, so I, I guess I'm gonna stand at that point and say truly right now, I don't know. And I would have to reach out to legal counsel. Um, I think what would happen is we could say this. And then, and once again, remember, I'm gonna reach out to legal counsel. I'm gonna say that again. But we could put that, but if we ended up in a court situation. Um, in, in where a parent pushed or the, or the student pushed it and had an advocate, they could say, well, the state law says. You shouldn't have told their parents. And so we could lose if we ended up in a legal battle or a court situation.
Correct.
So it doesn't say we can't put it in a policy until, until it hurts us or we end up in a legal battle.
I think the, the general practice by our administrators is to notify parents when there are situations that occur. But they do, students add up at a certain age to have a right to refuse. Most, most kids. Oh, have, you know, if they were discriminated against, something happened to them, they don't have any problem in letting their parents know. Matter of fact, they may have already let their parents know. So, but it doesn't mean that would be the case in a hundred percent of the situations.
I, my thought is, I mean, we, we get something in there on, on the policy about contacting parents and then, I mean, whatever we can do to. Uh, on that Washington state law portion of it, I mean, I. I'm, I'm big on contacting parents, so whatever. Whatever we can do to get that stuff in there, I'm, I'm, I'm all for it. Yeah, I know. Some of this stuff, our hands are tied, but. Man, I.
Yeah, I, I would agree. There's certain things that we have to look at what's best for the kids, what's. Um, you know, and what our constituents want as well, not just, you know, the state law is the state law, I get that. But this is a fairly new issue and I don't know that. Do, what, what, what kind of timeline do we have that we have to decide this?
Well, currently it's in law now, so we would, I mean. We would have to follow that law until you decide to otherwise amend that.
But if we just said, okay, the age is eighteen, then we would be in violation of the state law.
That's my understanding, but once again, remember, I'm going to check with legal counsel on what level our policy is versus state law.
Then I would maybe ask Michael, Brian, um, how. What percentage of the time, if a student had, was harassed in this way, what percentage of the time would, have you ever had a student say, don't tell my parent? Brian, so Mr. Denny indicated zero percent, zero times.
There are, so when we're talking about harassment specifically.
Right.
You become. More versed, better versed at separating issue, potential issues. Um, harassment is usually focused around some other topic. It's not, I'm not. Bullying, intimidation, harassment is centered around something. So what is that something? If that something is easy to talk about, then there's not a problem. If that something is difficult to talk about, then there is a problem. And that's where that age comes in. Sometimes kids don't want their parents to know what they're going through because it is a very close, you know, then. It, it's a hot topic.
They're sensitive.
It's a sensitive, sensitive topic. Um, you brought up gender identity, brought up, I was thinking back there. You know, sometimes we have. Mothers at our school, soon to be fathers at our school, they don't want their parents to know that. That's another one that, that may cause something like that. Um, and that's where those rights come into play. And so we, we do have more at the high school than, than any other building because the age of the students dictates that. It, it does come up. I wouldn't be able to give you a percentage, um, until I, you know, I mean, I have to go, go back and really dig into it. Um, but it is more frequent at the high school, even the age of our kids.
I mean, I, I, I understand that, I mean, all the issues at middle school, high, you know, high school predominantly go through. But a, again, I, I mean, if I had a fourteen year old kid and something happened or information was withheld from me. That's not, that's not cool.
And that's what I'm saying is that, you know, we contact parents, but at sometimes we're not allowed to tell them all of those details. So if there's intimidation, you're gonna, if there's bullying, you're gonna know about it. But we, none of us, even myself included, I might not know all of the details. Or, or other aspects of the situation because I'm not being told that because of those, those rights. So you're gonna know as much as, as much as we can tell you, but you might not know all of the, the details behind that. Does that make sense? I hope I'm saying that in a way that that.
Right, the law applies similarly to like counseling situations of a student sought counseling and support and from their school counselors, so- social worker, those same age requirements. Whereas a parent know that the student is participating, but they may not be able to tell them the details of whatever issues they're working through, because it's confidential. Um, we, we have a lot of our professionals have to walk a pretty tough line sometimes. But I get it because as a parent, I would want them to know as well.
Yeah.
Well, the concept of, of harassment from parents seems ridiculous to me because these parents are responsible financially, they're responsible for the, the issues that are at hand, and so they're responsible to take care of these kids. But they can't know what's going on. I mean, to me, that just doesn't seem, it just doesn't seem like a a very wise decision to put, put any of us in. You know, and, and I know the state does this, but that's, that's, uh, I just, I just, I, it doesn't make any sense to me.
We have students who are uncomfortable telling their parents something that they're going through. You know, like what, what kind of steps do we as a district take with that student? I mean, I'm hoping that there are some steps to try to get them, to encourage them to go talk to their parents.
Absolutely. There's not a, there's not an administrator, teacher, counselor, anybody who doesn't guide, support, and suggest. I think the the phys, the life threatening harm, there's always those pieces, right, that come into our, our non-negotiable. But I'm gonna use, you know, I'm a female, I'm gonna use this as an example because I feel safe in doing that. If I've just, I'm of high school age and just found out I'm pregnant and I'm not ready to do that and I'm making decisions and so forth. Um, there is not a counselor, staff member, you know, anyone in our district or community for that matter. That wouldn't sit, say, I'll sit down next to you, I'll sit beside you, we need to have this conversation. And I think that throughout our community, staff and everybody. But it's not our place to have that words with that parent, it's that student's part, so we, our goal is to get that what you're talking about, the tools in place to have that conversation, so this individual feels safe to have those. And sometimes that's taking two or three people to a home or doing things like that. But it's not our right to tell the parent about their child.
I'll give an example, I was actually doing an observation of our social worker, who was working with a student, um, and they, she needed to contact the parent and, um, it, it was, she had a very in, in-depth conversation with her about letting her parent know what was going on, the challenges she was experiencing, um, and I won't go into detail with those pieces, but they're having those, they have those conversations with, with the kids every, every time. Because they're all parents too, and they know. But that's what they would want.
So it might already be in here somewhere, I didn't read all the pages.
Surprised you didn't.
But, you know, if we hear back from our legal counsel that there really is as much we can do as far as that age. I think I would like to see in our policy and procedure somewhere what we will do as far as encouraging the kids, you know, we might already do it, but I'd like to see it codified.
We could totally do that.
So let me hear you back. If, so it'll stay, this'll stay in discussion for a while, right? So our first step will be to seek that out. Our second step would be to look at procedures that kind of lay out, here's recommended discussion topics, suggestions, whatever. So that we at least know our staff know what the board or the district's position is in those sensitive situations. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm thinking something along the lines of in procedure about um, contacting parents and sharing whatever information you're, is possible to share with the parent. And then I think also, um, school district, you know, staff will, something to the effect of, will encourage students who are um, get to make these decisions for themselves, you know, a little more eloquently than that, to, to share information with their parents so they can get that full help and support. I, we certainly can put language like that in.
Yeah, I think, no, I think that's a great starting point.
So we'll work forward with that. Um, and like I said, I'll check on that. I, when anybody who's listening, Deanna and I are not trying to be legal experts, we're not trying to do that, we're just trying to guide and hear loud and clear from our board the requests, and we can put that together and it like, much like the alcohol one, it's probably gonna sit until we get it refined to the point that everyone is satisfied.
Thanks, Brian.
Knowing that we will follow the law until such is the policy and procedure are formally adopted.
Thank you, everybody. I think that was a good starting conversation.
Thank you, guys.
H, action item. Number one, first reading of policy twenty one zero six, program compliant.
So, um, on, um, in the board packet, there was, um, letter I. Um, under, in that, you'll see a pretty long paragraph, and it lists, um, different groups and identified and so forth, and I was contacted by President Reiner today to ask, and, and his comment was something like this, and I'm not gonna quote him, so I'm gonna just use it in, was what if we forgot a group that was listed in I? And what is our legal responsibility if we forget a group? Or we don't list a group? And so I was tasked with, is there a way to improve paragraph I that is a little more open and not so targeted specifically? So on your piece of paper in your packet, you will see, or on your desk tonight, was two suggestions. Um, Selena and I, we tried to wordsmith them. Um, without calling out, for example, you'll see in the board policy, it uses the words Boy Scouts of America, right? Or veterans, you know, it uses specific groups. So what we did is we attempted to use words that identify groups without calling out specific names of groups. Um, and then I had a discussion, should we though add in either one of those paragraphs that are examples, should we add in? Something about religion. Even though it could be worded, you'll feel notice this unequal treatment of individuals in activities supported by common schools. This includes ensuring equitable access to all individuals or groups, which could imply religion, but does it need to be specifically called out? And so this piece of paper has those two wording ideas on it. This is still, this is an action item, so I wanted to share that with you before you decided if you wanted to move further.
My question would be, because it is so specific and a list out, is that a requirement? And would you need to find out if that's the case before we do a more general paragraph? Like, is there, is there a reason it was, I guess I would say that either Osipole or the, or Osipole. Um, but I think, yeah, a general paragraph is great, but what's, what's the reason it isn't, why it's specified?
Once again, um, to make sure we follow Robert's Rules of Order, then I think if, if that's the work you'd like me to do, I think this would be a tabled. I believe, if you want me to research that. Um, but I, other than that, I don't know the answer to that.
For us, I can ask if there are motions to approve.
Sounds like.
Send motion.
I'd make a motion to table this, uh, to table the action item. Policy twenty one oh six.
There are second?
Second.
These will table. Action item two, district instructional materials committee membership.
Director Riley, before you go on. So I'm, I'm, wanna make sure my notes are correct, and Selena has my notes correct. I'm going to research if there was a specific reason and answer back to the board on that. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, and were there any other questions by the board?
Um, I think it should be, religion should be in there.
Okay.
Where, or.
In the general, in the general con, if we go with a general statement, okay? Okay, so with board's permission, I would like to work on that. And then depending on what my answers are, we'll either come back and it'll stay tabled, it'll come back to discussion or to action.
Their comments and direction? Uh, action item two, district instructional materials committee membership.
So this is an update, um, the last time we approved a committee was about four or five years ago, and some of the people have retired now from that committee, or like Jesse Wilson was on there as a teacher, she's been a principal for a few years. So, um, well, this is the committee that once, for instance, the science adoption committee is science teachers and principals and parents. When they rec- make a recommendation, it goes to this committee, they review it, they make the ultimate recommendation that comes to the board. Right now, um, I have two new course offerings for CTE courses at the high school that need to be approved. That goes to district instructional materials committee first, then it comes to the board. So this is just refreshing and updating that committee, which is prescribed by our policy. So that I have people, all people that work and live here now on it.
So is there a motion to approve?
One question real quick. So say the, the science committee is a separate entity.
Yep.
So they would take their recommendation to this committee.
Yep.
And that committee would present.
Right, it's so like, there's all these committees, there's the science adoption committee and social studies and the groups that are writing new courses. They're here, it goes books then to the district instructional materials committee here. If they approve it, then it comes to you guys for final approval.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments? I'll move to approve the district instructional materials committee membership.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Alexander Yoshi. Motion carries. Number three, blanket service agreement twenty twenty five Winter Ball, Erica Alvarez.
Pinkly looks like Brian Bailey right now.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, it is in there for you, Mister Bailey is happy to. Or I could answer questions, so be it that you need them.
Another dance coming up, uh, it's just service agreements for, I haven't actually looked at the packet, but I would assume that it is for DJ. Pictures.
It's for pictures.
For pictures, okay.
Photo booth.
And photo booth.
Now, the stuff that we generally include at every, every dance that we have, and this one is coming up, I believe it's two weeks away, is that right?
And the DJ, all of them.
Students, any input? Sound good?
I don't go read answers, so.
I feel like I'm obligated to go to this one since I am one of the nominees for Winter Ball King.
Good luck to you, I should show up. Make a motion to approve the blanket service agreements for the twenty twenty five Winter Ball, is there a second?
I'd second it.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Say nay. Motion carries.
No, this is the second too late, but just wanna say, I'm pretty sure this is all ASP funded, right? Coming from our budget.
Good, good point. All right, vouchers. By the way.
Okay, these are our vouchers payable at the end of January.
Questions?
I was, yeah, I was asked to ask one question. Uh, the Craig Reynolds, um, how much? I guess, how much more consulting do we think we'll have with him?
Um, there's two or three days left on his contract, but I don't, I don't think we'll be utilizing it anymore, but there are three days left.
Three days left.
It is contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna brag on Delise, our goal is that we won't be using those, um, she is doing very well. But sometimes we don't know what we don't know when there are things pop.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the vouchers.
There are second? Oh, second, all in favor, say by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those carries vouchers are approved, consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would make a motion to approve the consent items.
There are seconds?
I would second.
All in favor, specify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
No Dave. Motion carries. With the fruit, report. Delise, Director Business and Operations.
Okay, so I'm doing, um, enrollment for January today, um, and as you can see, we are down. Um, we are down nine students, uh, and that is due to schedule changes for running start. And then we did lose six kiddos to, um, our open doors, open door, our fourteen eighteen school. Um, so enrollment is down, um, however, our January apportionment will be trued up with October's enrollment. Uh, which put us seventy seven kiddos over what we budgeted for. And then from here on out, our apportionment every month will be based on actual enrollment through August. Super exciting. I just want everybody to know, I was kind, you'll hear about it in my report, but that's super exciting. Yes, and so, and you'll see across the state, everyone's October spike was down, ours was not. I do just want to, I wanna point that out there, we did have an October spike when most districts across the state did not, so we are very, very lucky in that way.
Any questions for Delise?
Thanks, Delise.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent Deanna Flores.
Just gonna say it was skilled, not luck. Um, just quickly, because we had these requested previously, we are gonna have a PLC update um, at the first meeting in February, as well as our CEE survey information presentation. Eric Bowles, who works for CEE, will be coming and doing the presentation here for the board that night. And then, um, we'll be doing the data update and information from the each of the buildings and for the district at the second meeting.
Different agents report.
And I've got it in front of you, I'll go quick, I try to not take much time. So I'm excited that next Monday, Michelle, O'Brien, Deanna, and Albert Flores and I will be going to the Chamber of Commerce, um, Community Awards banquet. Um, kind of like we're doing on all these little talks or caveats. Um, that is not paid for by the district, that is paid for by me, um, so I just want everybody to understand that. Um, the Crystal Apple Awards, the committee met, and we have our Crystal Apple Award winner, which will be announced soon. So stay tuned, um, spoke with that individual today and they will be accepting the, um, award. Um, Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Years next week. Um, I haven't been to Rotary lately, if anybody's listening from Rotary, uh, it's just been kinda tough. Um, so my big meetings are on Thursdays, like tomorrow, so, um, it's not that I haven't been there, you've been in my heart. Uh, I just haven't been to Rotary lately. Um, I am, I have spoke to each of you, I am suggesting an apportionment or what's called enrollment study session, the third week in February, on February nineteenth. Um, Delise, Deanna and I, um, have been doing some work with the new company, we'd like to share that out. Um, we are happy to say that our enrollment projection last year was pretty spot on with what this company thought we should have used. What? Three or four off from what they recommended, um, but one of the big things is our birth rates are declining. And, um, some other pieces like that, and so we need to make sure we're budgeting very conservatively again. Um, I'm happy to say there's no legal things to report, um, the Washington State Report Card was released today. Um, so I don't know, I've got three principals sitting out there, it's pretty exciting. Um, overall, things are really improving, um, especially in looking at the math number. Um, if you've been, haven't been on Washington State Report Card, you need to go look at the math number. Um, um, attendance was flat, graduation rate, you know, so things are, things are really positive. And the other positive piece is the enrollment number, if you look at our trend, we're starting like this, so that's good. Um, facilities, Jesse mentioned the no heated car V today, it has been rectified. Um, I think the big thing that we need to understand here is the teamwork that went into place when we knew that there was a problem. Um, we all just kinda buckled down, we showed up and we did whatever, and it's amazing how fast you can get um, about twenty five plug-in heaters in classrooms when you say your littles don't have heat. We had parents who brought in when they got the notice, the parent square. They went to their, they had, you know, portable heaters in the house, brought them to the school, like, so people are into keeping their children in school, and so I think that was very positive.
Like, so people are into keeping their children in school, and so I think that was very positive. Um, at old PHS, at PHS here, if you've been into the gym and, and since some pieces were working, cleaning this building up. Deanna and I had a real aha today, and, um, we are committed within the next week that the. Main gym and the entrances and some of the restrooms will be brought up to speed, clean, cleanliness very quickly. Uh, KRV smell, I got an email on Tuesday, um, it's been closed up. Now, remember, it's cold outside, so we're gonna just, I wanna put that caveat in there, but we've had no smell of late at KRV. Capital Projects, um. Remember I talked about the backcourt millions, they are not here yet. However, if you drive by Housel, the great big huge new chiller. Is sitting there and we have it ready to go on the building and be up for commissioning in April, uh, first, or spring break. Art Fiker Access Project, don't ask me why, but they put rock in this one part of the pathway. But they poured the concrete today, yes, on one of the coldest days of the years, but it's got insulated blankets on it and whatever, and so that project is done. We, we, meaning not CTC, they're putting a light at the base of the stairs to go up the stairs, it'll kinda go. It has multiple heads on it, so we're super excited about that. Um, the next phase, I don't know if people came in and noticed the hallways and things look different, so. On the other side of the double doors will be in the next phase in the springtime sometime. Once again, depending on the capital projects pot of many, um, it's not coming out of levy dollars, um. And I've had a couple people in the community ask, the old tennis courts are going to be done in the spring. And they will have people ball courts on them, as well as tennis courts. Um. Eric and I are heading to Schwinn tomorrow, and we did have, Dan and I had meetings in all of the buildings and we talked about.
We talked about, um, just our fiscal situation we're in now, what it looks like for this year. Why we're kind of trying to hold on spending because, um, this, that cash flow issue that we're dealing with in ba- primarily in basic ed. Um, dollars, and then we talked about, you know, future years, what are our enrollments gonna look like over the next four years? Because of those classes of the two hundreds at the high school, but they're all in the one seventies-ish below high school. And as that continues, overall, we'll lose over a couple hundred kids over the next four years as those bigger classes graduate. Ready?
She has been the best cough partner anybody could have. She's done that throughout all of our meetings. Um, I do want to again tell you that I am going to the Small Schools Conference on Sunday, it's Sunday, Monday. And it is being paid for by the Small Schools Consortium. Our district is not paying for that.
Thank you.
Board report, Michelle.
I don't have a whole lot. I took, um, five eighth graders to state robotics competition this last weekend. Really fun. Um, they did pretty well, they didn't move on. They were very, very pleased that they didn't have to keep doing robotics. Few months, so, um, anyway, I'm very, very proud of them. I've coached them for three years. And I'm really hopeful that they will have the opportunity to do some robotics competitions when they get to the high school level. I'll be looking forward to seeing that put together next year, Mr. Bailey. And, um, and then I'm actually gonna go on Friday to Cornell to go, um, to the archery tournament. So I think there's quite a few middle school students and, uh, witchcraft kids that are gonna be at that, so looking forward to that.
Thank you, Brian.
Uh, I don't have much other than, um, our Washington State Legislature. They're all back doing their thing, so I would just urge, uh, parents, community members, get involved. There are currently four bills, um, that I know of, dealing with education, um, that were introduced on Tuesday. So I, I, I just urge people to get involved and contact your state representatives and keep reaching out. But that's all I got.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that, um. And also I just wanna thank you guys for the hard work you've done. I know these, some of these things we discuss are very, can be very difficult and, um. But you guys are doing a good job. Thank you.
I would just add, thank you for the gifts and the board recognition. It's nice to, um. Get a nice message and a nice note, and happy to be here and I appreciate the help and it is a hard topic and the principals that come and everybody. The community members that come, thank you for your time and effort, and I think we're in a really good position in our district. So with that, our next meeting will be a regular board meeting on February the twelfth, here in the Foster School District Forum at six P M. We are adjourned.